Powell Langhill. JR Huddleston.
Here.
Debra Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Travis Orbach. Larry Pratt.
Here.
Linda Barbell.
Here.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first thing on our agenda is the oath of office for newly elected officials. Misty, if you'd take us from here.
Would you like to come together or separate from the mayor and all of them?
Let's do them together.
Okay. You'll hold up your right hand and repeat after me, and I'm not going to say your name. I. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The codified laws of the state of South Dakota.
The codified laws of the state of South Dakota.
And the ordinances of this city of Hot Springs.
And the ordinances of the city of Hot Springs.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform all the duties of my office.
Perform all the duties of my office.
I will base my decisions on what is best.
I will base my decisions on what is best.
For the government and citizens of the city of Hot Springs.
For the government and citizens of the city of Hot Springs.
And not on any personal gain.
Not on any personal gain.
Or not under any direct or indirect obligation of others.
Not under any direct or indirect obligation of others.
Awesome. Thank you.
Next year. You too? Oh, okay.
Here we go again, sir. Here we are again.
Here we are again.
All right, we still have one vacancy in Ward Four. And we had asked that anybody in Ward Four that would be interested in being appointed to that position to submit their letters of interest. So there are two individuals that have done that. Tim Tesher and Gary Telkamp. Thank you for sending your letters of interest so that council could review those. They've had them for two weeks, so they've had a chance to take a look at them. What I'd like to do is just go ahead and have each of you, if you want to come up, and say something to council to address them. And then if council has any questions from what you've provided them, that'd be an opportunity for them to ask you questions. And if we do it alphabetically, I believe that would be Gary first. T E L versus T E S. Is that correct? Say again? Okay. So Gary, if you'd come down and introduce yourself. Public can then also have a chance to meet you and hear from you. Again, council has read the letter that you submitted, but if there's anything else that you would like to share with them, please feel free.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. Can you hear me?
Can the audience hear you?
Can you hear me? Okay. I think I've spoken with each one of you individually, with the exception of Linda. Hi Linda.
Hi.
And so, we've talked about what my interest was here. I don't have any agenda. I'm beholden to no one. And if I just thought I could help out with the city, you know, I would like to do that. So let me open it for questions. Ask me any questions that you might have. You're not going to find me on social media anyplace, so now is your opportunity. I don't have any.
Have you ever held any office before?
I have. But not at this level. Spent homeowners' associations and different community groups, yes. But nothing with city government. That's pretty easy. Somebody must have something.
I thought your letter was very thorough.
I'm sorry.
I thought your letter was very thorough.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you. Bill and I have served on a committee together, so Bill knows me. And the mayor. Misty. That can be all bad, I don't know. Guess we'll find out soon enough.
Yeah, Gary has been on Airport Advisory Committee for two or three years. I can't remember how long. He's been an active committee member and a value-adding committee member. Seems to understand how to work within a group. When he gets his way and when he doesn't get his way.
Anyone else?
I have nothing.
You're a newer resident of Hot Springs, so what about the community attracted you?
Well, I grew up in a small town, Armor, 50 miles south of Mitchell. And my wife's from a smaller town too, Fort Sumo, New Mexico. And five years ago, we decided to buy a property here in Hot Springs. And we fell in love with Hot Springs. It was a small town, and we got involved, and here I am. And we also have a property in Pennington County, so we're back and forth a little bit. But I consider Hot Springs to be my home now. I'm a registered builder here, and that's where we're at. My wife helps out with one of the stores here in town, kind of as a volunteer. Trying to get involved.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you, Gary.
Okay, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your willingness to step up. Tim, come on down.
Those of you that don't know me, my name's Tim Tesher. I first came to Hot Springs about 20 years ago as an employee for the city of Hot Springs. And I worked there for a little over 10 years or so, and left the city, and then went to work as a city councilman for four years, until I finally decided I needed to retire for a while. So that's where I'm at right now, is I'm retired. We have our own home here. This is where we plan on staying. So that's about the whole gist of my Hot Springs experience. I worked for the water department. I was a Class III water operator, Class II water operator, for several years. I know the city. I know kind of how it works. Misty and I started pretty close to the... I was on the council, I think, when Misty started. So we've been here quite a while. Went through some, as Misty will attest to, we went through some real turbulent times back then. Hopefully, none of you guys ever have to go through any of that. So if there's any questions, feel free.
What committees were you on when you were on council, Tim?
Public Works.
Okay.
Were you in Ward Four then also, Tim?
In what?
Were you in Ward Four when you were on council before?
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Nothing for me.
All right. Well, thank you for your previous service, and thank you for your willingness to step up again. Appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
All right, the last couple of times we've done this, the recommendation has been that... We used to do paper votes, but the recommendation from our attorneys has been that council actually needs to verbalize who they want to fill the position. So again, one more chance if you have any questions for the folks before you vote. Misty, if you'd call the roll, and if you folks would indicate who you want to fill the vacant position in Ward Four, whether that's Tim or Gary.
JR Huddleston.
Gary.
Larry Pratt.
Gary.
Linda Barbell.
Gary.
Bill Lukens.
Gary.
Debra Johnston.
Gary.
All right. So we have five votes for Gary. Congratulations or condolences if you'd like to come down, and Misty will then give you the oath of office. Tim, thank you again.
Thank you so much, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Tim.
Welcome to set your stuff down there. We have a packet ready for you. You've probably already reviewed it online, but... And then if you want to meet me up the front.
First. Hold up your right hand and try to raise it so that all of your ears can remember what you said.
Great, thank you.
I.
I. Gary, Hotel Camp.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The codified laws of the state of South Dakota.
The codified laws of the state of South Dakota.
And the ordinances of the city of Hot Springs.
And the ordinances of the city of Hot Springs.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform all the duties of my office.
Perform all the duties of my office.
I will base my decisions.
I will base my decisions.
On what is best for the government and citizens of the city of Hot Springs.
On what is best for the government and citizens of the city of Hot Springs.
And not on any personal gain.
And not on any personal gain.
Or not under any direct or indirect obligations of others.
Or not any correct or indirect obligations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, we have two other things we need to do before we actually get into the agenda for tonight, and that's the election of council president and vice president. And like selecting the alderman for Ward Four, these will be voice votes. But we first need from council a recommendation who you want to be your council president for the next year.
I would like to nominate Bill Lukens as president of the council.
Second. Anyone else? Bill, are you willing?
Yes.
You've done a fine job for a long time. You keep us straight.
Thank you.
All right. Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Linda Barbell.
Yes.
JR Huddleston.
Bill Lukens, yes.
Debra Johnston.
Yes.
Sure.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Gary Telkamp?
Yes.
Same. Congratulations or condolences?
Thank you.
And we need someone nominated for council vice president.
I nominate JR Huddleston for vice president.
Second. Same question. Are you willing?
Yes.
All right. Any questions of him? Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Debra Johnston?
Yes.
Gary Telkamp?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Linda Barbell?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
JR Huddleston, yes.
Thank you. All right. Again, conflict of interest. If there's anything on the agenda that you feel you shouldn't be voting on, please let the council know before you render a vote. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the June 17 council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 17 council meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the bills in between?
I make a motion to approve the bills in between for $167,420.72.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And can I get a motion to approve the current claims?
Make a motion to approve current claims for $438,175.59.
Second.
Discussion? Deborah? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Brings us to communication from the public. We have two that are on the agenda. The first one is John... Sean, what's the correct way to pronounce your last name? Feldy? John Feldy, if you'd like to come up? As we asked you to do the first time you were in front of us, if you give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Can you be close to the mic, or else it doesn't pick up?
Can you hear me?
I can't hardly hear you. Can you bring the mic up, maybe?
Is that better?
No. Carl?
Sure. Can you hear me now?
Speak up.
I don't think so.
Carl's coming down. Carl.
Did it get turned off? Carl will fix it.
Test one, two. Hoo-hah.
You just got to get up to it.
How's that? Still can't hear me?
There. That was better.
Okay.
All right. John, if you'll remember, and a reminder to council also, the last time that you asked to speak to council, we had talked about the fact that you were under the communication from the public and limited to five minutes, and then there really isn't an opportunity for council to interact and ask questions of you.
Yes.
So we asked you to go ahead and, you know, get put on the agenda again so we can broaden that discussion a little bit, so that you can give us a better idea of why you want to speak with them, and give them an opportunity to ask any questions, help them make sure they understand what it is you want to talk about.
Sure.
I would still ask that we, you know, keep it to a reasonable amount of time, but that was the reason we'd asked you to come back to us, so that we can have that more open discussion.
Sure, and I'll try to keep it brief. Do you want me to reiterate what I said the first time and start from the first?
If you would. We have new public, and I see that there are some folks in the public that are kind of straining to hear you. So are you still having problems out there? No? Some are shaking their heads no. No. Okay.
I've never been told in quiet before, so this is interesting.
All right.
So before we get started, I just wanted to maybe apologize for my verbiage and my manner of speaking. I'm told I'm rather aggressive, and I'm not attacking anybody, but I guess that's my personality. So understand that as I'm talking, this is just a concerned citizen. I've seen what happens to towns when they start going down this road of eroding private property rights. And I also think that our government on all levels has forgot their role, which is public servants, to serve the public, not to be our overlords or tyrants and dictate our lifestyles. And especially here, I see towns are known for three major things. It's water, it's buildings, and it's staircases. And I see that the public employees aren't maintaining public property. I see everywhere I go, I see a problem with that. But yet we hire an individual to come around and find problems with basically your employers, the people that live here and the citizens of this town. I see even Evans Plunge. We got peeling paint, we have broken blocks on the receiving dock. As I mentioned before, Kidney Springs, the gazebo's in bad shape. City Hall needs work. And we get on other people about their buildings, but I think the city should, our employees should maintain our properties before we start looking for trouble with the citizens of this town. Staircases, two of those are condemned. And I know some people don't like cars in yards, I get that. But if it's my private property, it's really not your concern. And then we get into aesthetics, but where do we stop with the aesthetics? I grew up in a small town very similar to this, and we had people painting cars out of the garages, small engine repair guys, guys that fixed our bicycles. We had all kinds of people working out of the garage. No permits, no problem. But now we all of a sudden have this idea where we all have to live in a like Leave It To Beaver community, where everything's perfect all the time. Not everybody cares about that. I personally am offended by manicured lawns. You are trying to force vegetation to grow that doesn't want to. We use tons of water, fertilizers, insecticides, and all that. But yet we kill the plants that are native and want to grow, the ones that are beneficial to our pollinators and stuff like that. So if a guy has cars in his yard, it's his yard. Why is it a problem? And why are we making it a problem? And better yet, why are we hiring someone to go around and find fault with us? We don't need to spend our tax dollars on that. I've actually witnessed people mowing the street. Paved streets was so bad a shape that we have vegetation growing, they have to be mowed. That's what I want my elected officials and my public workspeople to work on, not to monitor my lifestyle and how I choose to live. You know, and then you have the case of, not in this town, I have to go back to where I come from, but we had an 84-year-old woman struggling to pay her property taxes, and she starts getting fines from the city because she couldn't maintain her lawn. Well, she physically couldn't, and she couldn't hire anybody. So instead of coming down as tyrants on the people that you represent and work for, why don't we go and talk to the poor woman, and maybe somebody that's complaining about it could go mow her lawn for her? Be neighbors. I could go on and on like this, but you get the gist of what I'm trying to say, is that you work at the pleasure of the people. You serve at the pleasure of the people as public servants. Our employees work for the public good, right? For maintaining the streets. You don't want every citizen out there fixing potholes, because who knows what would happen, right? So I would appreciate if you would concentrate your efforts on taking care of the public properties instead of worrying about what we as individuals are doing on ours. I understand if we have garbage and you got rodents and stuff, that's affecting somebody else. But a guy's got a project truck he hasn't got to for 25 years. That's his problem, right? I like moving to this town. Now, I've been a taxpayer and property owner out here in the Black Hills for 34 years, and I've seen the changes, and I'm not a fan. This town has... I like old cars, I like stuff. I don't like manicured, perfect, no character homes. So, and I've talked to so many people in this town that agree with me. And unfortunately, all that promised to be here today are not here, and people are afraid that they'll become targets of their officials. If you stand up, you're going to be put down, they're going to find reason to get at you. And I had one of our public employees trespass on my property to videotape it, to find fault. Now, that building's been in disrepair for, what, eight years before I bought it? I'm trying to save an old building in this town, and it's a lot of money, and it's a lot of work, and I will get there as I can. I don't need added pressure and stress, because it's not perfect yet. I could keep going, but you get the gist. Has anyone got questions for me? Or do you want to explain why we're more worried about the citizens' property than the public property?
Which building are you talking about, John?
The one that I own?
Yeah.
The old hospital. Castle Manor.
Castle Manor, all right.
It's now Feldy Castle.
There's too much conflict with Castle Manor, so I decided to put my mark on the building.
All right. Council, any questions, comments? I do have some... I'd like to... Some questions I'd like to answer for you. Council? All right.
Does that mean you agree with me, or you disagree with me, or are you just going to continue to do what you want, not answer to me?
Well, I'll say that... I'll say that there are several of those things that you mentioned that the city is working on, but it takes extensive amounts of time, just as restoring your building is. You know, we are going through the steps to fix those staircases. We're... We got a grant and got some moisture litigation stuff going on in the city hall now. And granted, it needs a lot more than that. I'll agree with you there. We really need to do more on the city hall.
So you understand that these are long processes. Money's always an issue.
Yeah.
People have conflicts in their lives. I mean, I know an old-timer. His wife bought a '57 T-Bird, brand new, and she died. They've never... And he hasn't driven it since, and it's rotting into the ground. But he's not getting rid of it. And he shouldn't be forced to. That's the last thing that he has to remember his wife by, that he sees every day. So people say, "Oh, it's just a car." But people have different needs, different wants, and things mean things to them.
I've named my cars.
So you understand. And to be forced to get rid of a car you named wouldn't be right. And like you said, this building leaks like crazy, right?
We're working on it.
We... No, I understand, but you understand...
Why don't we let the mayor... Mayor had some comments for you to address some of your questions, so why don't we let him do that?
Just a couple of things that you had mentioned, John. Kidney Springs, you're absolutely right, it needs repair. Last year, we ordered some new columns for it. And I helped with that process. And I'll admit to the public right now that when we ordered them, I didn't do as much due diligence as I should have in ordering them. When the folks got to a point where they were scheduling replacing them, what we found out is there's actually, in four of those posts, there are metal I-beams that the wooden columns are actually slid over. So it's not a matter of just supporting a column, pulling one out and putting the one on, you know, replacing it. So you're right, we recognized that needed to be done, but the process has slowed down because we've now got to figure out how we're going to, you know, get four of those over I-beams that are there. The staircases, two of them have been closed. Council has approved money for design to get those taken care of. We want to maintain the look and the feel of them. And the firm is working on the final designs of that so that when we go out for grant money, some of the places that we're looking for for grant money, they have to be engineered, professionally engineered, you know, designs as we submit for that. So we are working on that. I'm confident that you know that sometimes these types of things take a while. It's not just you say, "Let's get it done," and we move forward. Vegetation in the streets, I'm not going to push back on that one at all. There's a lot of streets that we all drive that I think we recognize what you're talking about. The other side of it, you mentioned that you would like the city to be less stringent with our ordinances and that there are other folks that are out there. I recognize that. I hope you also recognize there's the other side, that the reason that we do this sometimes is because there are folks that want to adhere to the manicured lawns and other things. It's a balancing act sometimes, but the ordinances are in place, and we just need some kind of indication from council, whether they want to continue, you know, with enforcement of them, or if it's their feeling they want to back off a little bit. That's certainly not a decision they're going to give you tonight. But I would hope that we all take it, you know, under advisement and see what direction we're going to take. we all take it, you know, under advisement and see what direction we're going to go with it.
And I just hope that you would underappreciate that, that we do have private property rights, and all of our freedoms stem from private property rights. And when you degrade our private property rights, you take our freedom. And yes, people do want a manicured lawn, but why do they take precedent over those of us that like stuff?
Squeaky wheels. So you've now become one of the squeaky wheels that-
Oh, and I can squeak loud, too.
Well, yeah.
So, Bob Junior, he's not your son, right?
No.
That's an honorary junior, or?
He's a real junior.
Well, he's a junior, but Bob's a common name, and Nelson's a common name, and Junior's common, so.
Okay. But he was talking, he gets complaints every day. Okay, I can complain every day, but why do we give attention to these people? And another thing I like to do about complainers, right, because they're the people that, I can go attack my neighbor through you. I can get you to get my neighbor, right? Gives me power, I feel, ooh, I got him, right? So before someone can complain to the city, to our people, they have to on three occasions try to solve the problem themselves. Be neighbors. Don't, don't just be people that want to create conflict. And if on three occasions, you can't just go say, clean that up, or I'm going to go get you, right? Try to work it out as neighbors, like the old lady, 84-year-old lady can't mow her lawn. Go mow her lawn. Problem solved. Don't have to get anybody involved, and it doesn't cause her stress and grief. If on the third time you can't resolve it, then we get to go to the city, go down to city hall, fill out a complaint form, and give a $25 filing fee. Guarantee you 90% of the complaints go away. Because if you have to put an effort into solving a problem, you're too lazy, you're not going to do it. But when I can call Bob and say, Bob, get him, what did that take on my part? Nothing. What did I have to add? What did I have to contribute? Not a thing. Am I helping the town? No, I'm just becoming more adversarial. And I'm going to, when I talk to you folks, you're going to hear a lot of stories about where I'm from, because I came from a town like this.
Excuse me, just one second, sir. Also remember, we have other people that want to speak tonight, too, so five minutes.
I got on the agenda so I could speak.
Yes, but we also said five minutes.
Okay, what time am I at?
You're over five minutes.
Well, I'd, again, Mayor, I had mentioned before John started talking, that the reason we did it this way is so that he wasn't limited to the five minutes, so that he had an opportunity to explain a little more in detail, and you as counsel had an opportunity to ask him questions. I'd also mentioned that, you know, we didn't want to get too deep into this.
The first time. Isn't that why you need to get a little more deeper into it?
Well, I'd even mentioned tonight that we want to give you an opportunity to have, you know, more explanation for counsel to answer questions. But my hope would be is that we're not going to still be having this conversation a half hour from now, because the council isn't going to be able to make a decision tonight. I think they're confident in how you feel about how we're enforcing our ordinances.
And I, if, I get that, and I am not expecting much today but to answer questions and to give a little more elaboration on things. It's not as easy as people think. And I'm sick of whiners and criers always getting in your way, getting in their way, because a lot of us are busy, don't have time to come up and call every day, and I don't want you to be the big bat that comes out and beat on people because somebody complained. Shit, just had something. So, it isn't just me, and unfortunately, I wish more people would have showed up, but I've talked to so many people in town that feel the same way that I do, that it's private property rights, people are getting sick of being pushed around, it's their life. The guy that wants to have the manicured lawn, he can have his manicured lawn. What if I told you that I don't want to see manicured lawns because of the resources they take to maintain, and, you know, climate change that we hear all about, lawn mowers and weed whips and all that stuff? So I'm offended by that. Are you going to do anything?
Excuse me, John. You keep using the term manicured lawn.
Yes.
I'm not 100% sure, but I think our ordinance says that a lawn in a residential community where the lot is built on, the grass has to be no taller than eight inches. And I'm not sure, so when you use the term manicured, that causes one to think of a three-inch, green, evenly cut, edged lawn, and that's not what our ordinance says.
No, and I, and I understand that. I'm talking about the people. No, I'm talking about the people that want manicured lawns.
Well, that's fine, if they want them. But you are incurring that our ordinance is calling for everyone to have a manicured lawn, and that's not what the ordinance is calling for.
I understand that.
So let's, let's not put an unrealistic expectation, or an improper expectation or slight on what the city is asking for. I realize you don't want that. I don't believe you are in the majority, but there is, there are safety issues, there's other issues, and we obviously have two different sides, but there are minimal standards that are addressed in the ordinance. There is a process that's addressed in the violation process. It's not a, you violate the ordinance one time and you don't get hit immediately with a fine or an action order, so I understand where you're coming from, you don't want to be told what to do. We do live in a community that-
It's more than that, and I am not saying that that's what the ordinance is.
And I think, from my standpoint, I've heard as much as I need to hear from this discussion, so I understand where you're coming from, though.
I concur with Mr. Lukens. Counsel, anyone else?
I agree with Bill and Larry.
Meaning?
I, I think we all understand-
Yeah, we understand where you're coming from.
Your side, that you want us to be, to focus more on things that as a city we should be doing as far as infrastructure, and looking after our own stuff more than we're worried after looking after private property owners' issues. Is that accurate?
That sums it up.
Okay.
And I'd like to get back, I was not insinuating that that's what the ordinance is, I'm talking about those kind of people that want that. And you said you're not a majority, but we're not a democracy. It's not majority rules in this country. We are individuals with individual rights, and I think we should all have our rights respected. And I understand there are some boundaries, and if you want a bunch of people, like I call them lawn manicures, form a homeowners association, anybody can do that. And then as free people, you can then restrict what you are allowed to do. I just don't like-
I hear what you're saying, and you're saying lead by example. I get that, okay? But also, I'm going to reiterate, we're going on 737, if you want to lead by example, we also have somebody else here that wants to have, and we understand what you're saying, sir. No disrespect.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Joe.
All right. Our next scheduled communications from the public is from Brenda Gamachi, what's the correct? All right. So when, when we actually get to the agenda item, that's when you want to address counsel?
Oh, okay.
All right. All right. Those are the two that are on the communications from the public. Is there anyone else that would like to take five minutes to address the counsel? Uriah, come on down. And I would just like to mention that when I said five minutes, because wasn't on the agenda as such, and we're back into, you know, a standard, five minutes to address the counsel, but there's not going to be an opportunity for the back and forth that we had with John. So if you could give us your name and address?
Uriah Lowallan, 2244 Minicotta Avenue. I'm here in support of John in his position. Rights are things that we don't need permission for. You don't need the permission to live, you don't need the permission for liberty, you don't need the permission for pursuit of happiness. We have those rights. Constitution is filled with the whole bill of rights. And like John has said, another one of those rights is private property rights. Anytime we put stipulations, regulations, or any kind of thing like that, we diminish those rights, and we can't let that happen. He's right. Many of these ordinances are used, unfortunately, for people to bludgeon their neighbor when they are, they are afraid to actually confront them and talk and work things out. And that's not correct. That's not the way it should be. I actually, I would actually ask counsel to begin a hard look to rescind many of these ordinances, because they are unenforceable in the fact that you can't do equal treatment under the law. If you're going to penalize one person for a violation, you have to punish everyone with that violation, and that is an impossibility in this town. I also would like to say that it's important, if you expect people to respect the law, you have to respect the law. We currently have an illegal city manager, and just by changing the name doesn't make that right. Why don't we have an election, like the state statute says, so that people can decide whether they want to have a city manager? We can't bulldoze through a riparian area that is the river. It is a violation of a city ordinance, and the EPA, and many other laws. We can't just do what we want and then expect people to obey these municipal codes as they're written. So I'm asking you to take a good, hard look at it, a good, hard look at what we're doing. The city should be maintaining its streets, which it doesn't. It should be providing sewer and water, which it doesn't. There are many parts of the city that don't have any sewer. There are unpaved roads. We have stairways that are in disrepair. We embarked on grandiose projects like the overhanging sidewalk without consulting with the people. They should have been consulted and allowed to vote on that. That's passed, that's over with, but let's try to do that in the future. Let's be a servant government, and that's all I have to say on this matter.
Thank you, Uriah. Thank you. Anyone else? Come on down.
Hi. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
You might have to lower this. Your typing is echoing out here. If you're using your microphone, thanks. It's kind of hard to hear. Okay, my name's Trio Ray, and I live at 745 Indianapolis Avenue currently, and I have talked to Bob Nelson, I'm on the phone, about the library situation. I am a taxpayer on three properties in this town, and I shouldn't have to go to other cities to get ample time to use a computer. We have 14 computers for 3,500 people population here, 14. There's never a line, there's never a reason that you can't have more than an hour. It just seems very micromanaging. And I've had to go to Alliance where they only have three computers for 8,500 people, and they let me start at three hours. And then if I go over three hours, if there's no one waiting, they keep increasing my time. And as long as no one's waiting, I could sit there till they close. And I have the same situation when I go to Shadrone to use their library, they only have four computers, and their population is 2,000 more than us. And as long as I'm working on something that isn't sitting on Facebook, something that's important, or making documents, they will let me sit there until I'm done, and they help me and assist me. I can hardly get assistance in this library when I'm working on something and I need help, or I need help navigating something on the computer. I've even had librarians come over and actually dump stuff that I was working on in error, and then not give me the additional time to go back through and fix it, and told me, well, you already used your hour. Yeah, but you just dumped all my stuff, and you're not going to let me fix it? So the other thing is I've even gone all the way to Gillette, I've gone all the way to Rapid. I shouldn't, I go to Custer and they give me more time. I shouldn't have to commute to all these different cities so that I can get more than an hour's time on a computer where we have 14, and there's never a way, there should never be a limit on what time you need on that computer if no one's waiting. If no one's waiting, what's the problem with me being on there? I can't even get all my email checked within an hour. You know what I mean? So I'm just saying that this is not, it being that I am paying property tax on three properties, does that give me three times the amount of time on the computer? I think it should. And I think they need to, I don't know what it is, I know some of you are probably on that library board and could possibly make this change, but I've recently written the government, I've written the newspaper, I've talked to you, and you've done nothing about it. Nothing's changed. And so I would like to see that, and I'm not alone on this either. And people in oral, that kids go to Hot Springs, they have to pay to use the library. Now Rapid City, I don't know if you're aware of this, I used to go there often for their library, they just passed a new bill, I think it was in February, that if you are not from Pennington County, you have to give them $105 upfront to use their computer. You can only use their few community computers they have for 15 minutes, and that's it if you don't live in Pennington. So now that's not an option for me either. So that is my big beef with the library, and you know about it, Bob, because I've talked to you, I've talked to you on the phone about it. Now I'd like something done about it. Is that possible?
You talked to the library?
Yes. And one of the librarians said to me, she goes, you know what would be really nice? And I said, what? I thought she was going to give me a suggestion. She said, get your own computer. And I said, no, these are our computers. As a community, we pay to maintain that library, they just got re-chanked, plus we pay for all the IT people to come in and do the upgrades, on 14 computers. These computers that we're paying for are not being utilized as much as they could be by the community if they're going to limit everyone to an hour, and I've never once, in all the time I've lived here, I've never once been in that library where every computer was taken or there's been a line. It's never happened. So I would like to see some, you do something about this, because I'm getting tired of driving everywhere else to use computers than I did here.
Thank you.
Oh, you're not doing that before that?
Yeah, thank you.
Maybe you can call Bob.
Anyone else? We'll get to our next agenda item, council updates. An update from our public works engineer, Tracy.
Well, good evening. Okay, yes, this is on. So, well, one thing we've not had much of an issue with with the project is weather delays. The dry weather has definitely been advantageous for the construction, not so advantageous for plant life that needs water. But anyway, a lot of progress in the last 30 days. As you've probably noticed, a lot of the concrete has been poured on the section of North River Street from National Avenue up to Battle Mountain. And today, milling operations actually began on Battle Mountain, so the very last piece of the road project is actually now under construction. So that's a big milestone, it really is, that you can now stand and see the end of the project. Utility-wise, the only remaining utility is a water main on Battle Mountain. Other than that, all utilities are in. Of course, there's still storm sewer that they'll be installing on Battle Mountain Avenue, but yeah, we've really come a long, long ways, and it's just good to see that. I think we have our usual weekly update meeting tomorrow, so we often get some updates on, you know, what the next several days, of course, they will be taking a break over the Independence Day holiday period, but probably next week, you will also see more- A lot of detail work involved with that. So sometimes it doesn't look like things are happening quickly, but it is happening. So I think that's pretty much the update. I'll field any questions. You looking at me, Larry?
Oh, I was just going to make a half a question and make it a partial joke. So when I start working on the water main, what day should I take a bath and then extend it?
Well, they've been pretty good about maintaining water service with minimal interruptions. That... The water main itself is... Well, it might be in the next couple of weeks. Once they have that milled, then they can open it up and start working on that. So yeah, keep in touch, let you know when to plan on a possible interruption. But that's a pretty straightforward water main. It doesn't have a... Well, I shouldn't say that for sure, but it should be. Yeah. So we'll keep you in the loop.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Carl? Can you turn up the audience microphone a little bit? Tracy typically doesn't have a problem.
Yeah.
He's very soft tonight, so...
Very soft.
I think that's it?
Yeah, it could be.
But it doesn't seem quite as loud as it usually does. And I'm almost... I'm not standing far back from it, so...
All right. Any questions for Tracy?
Like today, they're going to maintain...
How are they going to work that hill? I mean, that's a small... That's that street and the sidewalk, everything, how's that going to go down?
My understanding is Battle Mountain is wide enough to be able to have two-way traffic. There probably won't be any parking on Battle Mountain, but there's not... People don't use parking that much on Battle Mountain really as it is, but I don't think the one-way will go around the corner. There's enough width. It'll be more like when they were working on the south end of town that they were able to maintain a two-way traffic. So we're getting through the narrow spot, so...
Right. I just kind of...
Not much longer.
Yeah. I just kind of bring this up as a side note, too, because I know that a lot of people are going to go around the Evans Loop thing, buy the plunge and go up Summit Harley and go down, you know? Just want to tell the general public, bear in mind that there are children that live on those streets that it's summertime now, and it is posted 15 miles an hour. I know we do 20 miles an hour sometimes, but, you know, let's at least try to be mindful of what the speed limit is through there. It is going to be rough for a little bit again.
A lot of extra traffic comes through there.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes?
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
That brings us to personnel. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions A through H?
I make a motion to approve personnel actions A through H.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto our only ordinance of the evening. Can I get a motion to approve the second reading ordinance 1258?
Make a motion to approve second reading of ordinance 1258 supplemental appropriation ordinance.
Second. Discussion? Ms. T., would you call the roll?
Linda Barmau?
Yes.
Gary Calcamp?
Yes.
Phil Leach?
Yes.
De'Ar Huddlesden?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Deborah Duncan?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Onto new business. Can I get a motion to approve new business item A? Concur with the selection of Brenda Gomash and Petra Wilson.
I make a motion to concur with selection of Brenda Gomash and Petra Wilson on the rendering submitted for the University Avenue mural.
Second.
Discussion? Come on down, folks. So council, Ms. T. handed out a smaller version of the mural that's being proposed. Ms. T., do you have the larger... Still have the larger ones if anybody wants to take a look at them? And also on the back...
That's an old rendition there.
Yeah, it's the previous one. It's got a different color on it.
Okay, that is the current one. It just got a little stretched on the print.
Okay.
Petra, is that the orange one or the red one?
Is that the orange one or the red one?
Yeah, it's a little bit darker.
It is the orange one. It came out a little different in print, it looks like.
Oh, okay.
So we'll start just introducing ourselves.
So just to hang on a minute if you would, Matthew. The other thing that on the back of the small one, Matthew had sent some additional information regarding the dimensions, the costs, the total of the project, and the bottom item that I'd like to point out to council, the price does not include maintenance and repairs. This is simply to paint the first version. If it's vandalized or 10 years down the road, it needs to be refreshed. There is no provision on how to handle that. Council, if you accept this tonight, it's with the understanding that something may or may not be done to the mural in the future. But that is not on Matthew. That's not his responsibility. It's not the balloon folks' responsibility. They'll also talk about the rotary folks. This is just getting it done the first time. Did I misrepresent that, Matthew?
No, I agree.
All right. So if you folks would let us know how we got where we're at?
Yeah, just introduce ourselves real quick. My name's Matthew Carpenter, newer member of the community here. I bought a home in July of '22 and moved here. Grew up on the east side of the state, North Sioux City, South Dakota. Grew up there my whole life. I've been a muralist, sign painter, commissioned artist for over 12 years now. Done a lot of projects similar to this for other communities. And yeah, just really looking forward to do something cool for the community and something that could, you know, be a nice thing for tourists to see as they come in. And yeah, just kind of get the wheels turning in Hot Springs for us.
My name's Morgan Fields. I also moved here back in July of '22, and I have a bachelor of fine arts in sculpture, printmaking, and graphic design. And I've been working in signs and just art, like art industry, most of my life. And it's something I'm really passionate about and something I believe that everyone needs to enjoy and have more in their life.
You guys probably already know these ladies.
Hi, I'm Petra Wilson. I helped get the first balloon mural put together, the one below the E Free Church. Several years ago, I approached Diane Gross from the CDO because I had an idea for the wall. We have two children that were in elementary school at the time. I guess one was in elementary, one was in middle school. And I got so tired of driving up and down university and seeing all the graffiti on the wall multiple times a day, and so I thought, "We need to do something. This is embarrassing to Hot Springs." So I did a little research, and I found Diane Gross, and she had created some of the other murals in town or helped with making those happen. So I approached her, and I got a group of like-minded individuals together, and we raised about $10,000, putting balloons up in the air, donating propane, our dying of balloons. And we got a mural painted, and that ugly wall is covered now. So we have one beautiful mural, and we started working on the opposite wall, which had some graffiti as well. But then, as you know, Diane Gross passed away. And so the CDO has also been in the process of dissolving, so I found some other folks that would be interested in helping to continue this mission. And so as a community, I got some balloon folks together, and we put some more balloons in the air and raised over $2,000, donating our time with bringing in people and doing balloon tethers and things like that. And so we're working on funding this mural opposite of the balloon mural. Currently, we have just over $2,000 in the bank. The CDO has $889 that they're going to put into it that was remaining from when Diane Gross was there when we were working on originally funding this. I applied for the McCully's Vision Fund at the beginning of this year, but because of the dissolving of the CDO, that's been delayed. But I will be receiving that check along with Keep Hot Springs Beautiful this Friday here at the Mueller Center, so that's $2,000 that we've been awarded. The Rotary is going to be applying for a $6,000 grant, matching grant. And then there's two other grants that were recently applied for, for $1,000 apiece. We should be finding out about those by the end of July. So our goal is to reach close to $12,000 to fund this whole project, and so far, we're accomplishing those tasks. So my part in this is just to donate my time and my efforts to try to beautify Hot Springs. I was... I didn't like the ugly walls. I really didn't enjoy seeing graffiti, even though it'd get painted over once in a while, but then a flower would show up over on top of it. I think our murals are really cool. They've... I've seen pictures of them in various places, in magazines and different things. I've seen a lot of tourists standing in front of murals, taking their picture in front of the mural. So I want to help Hot Springs beautify another wall. So I'm here to raise some money, and these folks are going to look into that. Looking very supportive.
I'm Brenda Gomash. I'm not good at speeding, but we did close the CDO that Diane and Gross started. But these kids are going to make it beautiful here, so I hope you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to touch on the maintenance part of the quote there, it's not included in that price. With this being a city-owned wall, I'm more than willing to be contracted. Like if there was damage to it, repairs that are needed, I would be more than willing to be contracted at that time to fix the mural. Like if it gets, you know, degraded or your feet eat or anything like that. So I'm not saying that I'm not willing to do that. It's just not included in this initial price.
And if I left you with that impression, I apologize. That was not what I...
Oh, no, no, no. I just wanted to make sure everyone's understanding. And then also, we can send you guys digital copies to give you a little more accurate rendition of the colors, because the colors are a little off in the print here. And then, yeah, the Rotary and the Keep Hot Springs Beautiful would like their logos somewhere on it because they're doing a lot of fundraising and donation for it. So we're planning on possibly adding those bottom-left corner of the wall, the short section of the wall. It would just say something along the lines of "Sponsored by" or "Proudly sponsored by" and have a small logo of each of theirs is what they're kind of wanting in exchange for putting up money for it.
So the city's contribution is the wall and concurrence with the design?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah.
I also want to interject with the contribution of the city. I know the last time, Petra, when y'all put the other one up on their side, you needed the bar to lift, right? So if...
There will be no lifts on this.
You won't need a lift for this one?
Probably not. The walls will be...
Well, just in case you need a lift, can we get that clarified tonight, just in case you do? Because I know that you may have scaffolds or whatever, but I know the last one, they had to use a... To paint the end of it, the bottom of the hill, they had... They borrowed... You remember that bill?
Yeah, the man lift?
Yeah, they borrowed the man lift for that. So if that's okay with the council, just leave that out, just in case they need to borrow that at a later time.
Yeah, I mean, it would be great. You guys are offering it, you know? I would rather paint out a lift than off of a ladder, but I also am trying to stay within the budget of what the people who are providing the money...
You can only put so many pads on the top of that thing before it scars, right?
Yeah. It hurts the feet standing on a ladder all day, I'll tell you what.
Right. So like I said, Mayor, if that's something doable...
I would put that back to the council, as you're aware. You know, once you go down a road that... Once you make an exception, then you open yourselves up for other organizations wanting like contributions.
Right.
And it's been our past policy. Larry, you point out that we provided some assistance with the other mural, but we typically don't loan out city resources that way. So council, you would need to direct the city administrator if that's what you want to do, with the understanding that you put the city in a situation of down the road, somebody else is asking it, and then somebody else is asking it, and where do you say no?
Right. And with my initial design and quote, I did not plan on using a lift at all. It was going to be all from scaffold mines. The only, I guess, thing that I would ask from the city is maybe we can block off one lane when we're doing the layout, just for our own safety.
And that's what it did last time.
To give us a little bit of a buffer, you know?
Right. I think that's a very reasonable request.
Yeah.
We don't have any agreement for continued maintenance on any of our other murals in town, right?
Well, they're not ours. They're all privately owned.
They are privately owned?
They're on private buildings.
Oh, okay.
Right. This is the first city mural that I'm aware of.
Or the one across the street from it, though?
That's on the wall that belongs to the church.
Oh, that's also private then, huh?
Yep.
So if we haggle then one time, freebie, and then the next time?
I think we could come up with a very reasonable solution for it if it does need repair.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, Morgan will be one of the artists.
Right. And that's what I understood, is that you and you were going to be the artists, three artists that were doing this. No, no. I'm saying her, her... Brenda, you weren't going to get up there? I thought you were going to help paint with it also.
She might bring us lunch, I think.
Oh, okay.
I'll bring you the money, she'll bring the lunch, we'll...
Okay, thank you.
Can you tell us a little bit about how you came up with this concept?
Yeah, I'd love to. So the concept is based around like a vintage postcard design, where you can kind of see the...
Okay.
Kind of a postmark in the left corner with South Dakota. So there was a lot of ideas for this mural. We had a lot of people who wanted specific things, balloons, trains, animals, springs, the VA building. And I thought this, yeah, the state veterans, I'm sorry. I thought this would be the best way to bring all of these ideas together and still have it be a cohesive thing that is representing what we're trying to get. And there's no other mural in town that really just says, "Welcome, Hot Springs." And I think it'll be a very large draw for tourists, which I know is a big thriving point of our town. If we don't bring tourists in, our businesses don't flourish. So I think the more big, beautiful art projects we can put in this town, just the better. We're going to look in the eyes of the people that are coming and spending their money and supporting our local businesses.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I would like to thank the four of you. There were certainly different ideas of, you know, what should be on the mural, different visions for it. And I know that you folks spent a lot of time sitting down and trying to figure out what the right blend of it would be. I personally think it's a fantastic mural. So thank you for working with each other to come up with something that is in front of council tonight for their consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you.
Does that mean we have the approval to go?
We have to vote.
We have to...
For timeline, just so you know where we are with things, the Rotary, the $6,000 grant that they're writing right now, we'll find out about that by the end of September. So we cannot put any paint on the wall until all the funding is in. So if we get everything that we're working on, the earliest that we would be able to start would be beginning of October.
Which we're more than happy with, so we don't have to be cooking out there until August.
Yes.
There's a timeline with...
How?
Excellent. Okay.
There is no timeline in front of council tonight, so in my mind, there is no expectation that, you know, we'll...
So if we get everything that we're working on, the earliest that we would be able to start would be beginning of October.
Which we're more than happy with, so we don't have to be cooking out there until August.
Yes.
There's a timeline with-
How?
Excellent.
There is no timeline in front of council tonight, so in my mind, there is no expectation that, you know, we'll see you out there painting next week. There's just a concurrence with the design, that they like the design and that's what they want to use the wall for. They want your design on it.
Appreciate it.
And not to exclude you two, but Brenda, Petra, I appreciate y'all doing this, because on some of our old stuff that we did looking at, I was, I was really concerned that this was going to be lost in the paperwork somewhere and it would become to fruition. So thank you, okay? Appreciate it.
My only comment is, this is why we ask artists, not engineers, to do this.
That's right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So council, before we ask you to vote, again, an understanding that you're approving the use of the wall, as Bill said, and the design, with an understanding that if it's damaged a year from now, or whatever, there's a conversation that will need to be had about, does it get repaired? And, you know, how does that happen? But tonight is concurring with the selection of Brenda and Petra's design and Matthew and Morgan's. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Congratulations. Onto new business item B. Can I get a motion to approve, to set a budget meeting dates for July 30th and August 1st?
Make a motion to set the budget meeting dates for July 30th and August 1st, to begin at 5:00 PM each day. Location will be the Mueller Civic Center, 81 South Sixth Street. And additional days may be added if necessary.
Is that second? Discussion? And for the public, these meetings are open to the public, if you want to attend. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion for new business item C? Approve a request from the Hot Springs Area Pickleball Club and Southern Hills Recreation Community Initiative.
I make a motion to approve the request from the Hot Springs Area Pickleball Club and Southern Hills Recreational Community Initiative for $2,660 in funding to purchase resurfacing materials for the basketball court at Butler Park and to purchase wind screens to be funded by future contingency transfer to the park's improvement other than buildings 101-45200-43300.
Second? Discussion?
Yeah. You two out there? I've kind of been out of pocket for the last two weeks dealing with some medical issues and being sick. What's that?
Are we going to do it?
Yes. This windscreen, now, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought it was already took care of.
Correct.
So what do we-
If it's purchased, we'll need to install it. So this is, for the windscreen portion, it's just permission to install the windscreen on the current fencing.
Is there any repairs that need to be done to that wall around there before you can install the windscreen?
We've talked to Bob Junior. He's got plans to put some additional ties on the fence.
Okay.
But that's just general maintenance that he was already planning to do, so that should be done concurrently.
And some of that's in your paperwork that you put together, right? Okay. Like I said, I apologize for not making a meeting. I was, had a tube stuck down my throat, but we'll talk about that.
Yep. So we've got the funding for most of the resurfacing, probably two-thirds of the resurfacing, and for all of the windscreen. So we did go ahead and purchase the windscreens, so that'll be a material donation at the amount listed. And then we're requesting the additional resurfacing material. The biggest part of that, obviously, is labor. We've got expertise and volunteers lined up. We've done the other side of the tennis and pickleball courts and hoping to get the basketball side resurfaced as well, so everything matches and everything's at the same maintenance schedule. And obviously, to take advantage of it while we do have volunteers lined up.
I guess my only negative question to this is, once all this is done and everything's set in place and three or four years go down the line, who's going to maintain maintenance on this?
That's a reoccurring maintenance for the park. If Jason and I are around, I'm sure we'll be here to help out any way we can to make sure that that maintenance stays current. We do have extra material that from the first phase, and obviously, we'll have that from the second phase. So if there are patch repairs, track and pickleball, they're going to be on call. If you guys need help, it's the same surface material that you guys will be having on the course of the maintenance, it'll be very simple.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I just do, I'm so thankful you guys have come up with this and you've done a beautiful job on the pickleball court. I don't think we should be presumptuous in thinking that they should be responsible forever for the maintenance of these courts. It's a city-owned recreation that we offer the city and we put money towards it, and it has in the past had volunteers for this specific thing. I should hope that the city will keep it properly maintenance. But I really appreciate you guys stepping up and it's been priceless, the improvement
Anyone else? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Can I get a motion to approve new business item E? Set a public hearing on July 15th?
Dee.
Well, we just did the pickleball, folks. Okay. So can I get a motion to approve new business item D? Accept a designated donation of $7,570 from the Hot Springs Area Pickleball Club and the Southern Hills Recreation Community Initiative.
I make a motion to accept designated donation of $7,570 from the Hot Springs Area Pickleball Club and the Southern Hills Recreation Community Initiative for the resurfacing of the Butler Park Basketball Court to match the recently resurfaced pickleball slash tennis area and to purchase the winds, and to purchase windscreens to attach to current fencing.
Second?
Discussion?
I guess we should probably change the purpose of the windscreen. They've already done that.
Right.
We don't need to.
Yeah, we need purchases. That's correct. We'll be donating the windscreens in that value amount. That's what we're thinking.
Okay.
So then, in the motion, is the person that made the motion and the one that seconded okay with Misty just deleting the, to purchase windscreens?
Yes.
All right. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. All right. Now into new business item E. Can I get a motion to set a public hearing on July 15th at 7:10 PM?
I make a motion to set a public hearing on July 15th, 2024, at 7:10 PM on the special sale alcoholic beverage license application from the Mammoth Site for Cool Mammoth Nights events on July 20th, 2024, and August 31st, 2024, at the Mammoth Site at 1800 Highway 18 bypass.
Second? Discussion? I don't see anyone here from the Mammoth Site. All right. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And our last new business item F. Can I get a motion to recognize and record the names of the three suppliers?
Make a motion to recognize and record the name of the three suppliers and their quotes received for the purchase of 4,000 gallons of 100 LL aviation gasoline by the Hot Springs Airport. As required by South Dakota Codified Law 5-18C-6, purchase was made with City Service Valcon at 472 per gallon. Other vendors considered were World Fuel Aviation Group at 487 and Epic Fuel LLC at 473.
Bill and JR? You did?
Sure.
All right. So stand corrected, Larry. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Brings us to our committee reports. First one, administrative and finance, JR?
Admin, finance will meet, excuse me, will meet next Monday, the 8th, here at the Mueller Civic Center at 1:00 PM. All are welcome.
Thank you. Airport advisory, Bill?
Airport advisory will meet Thursday, July 11th, at 11:00 AM at the airport. And please note, that is a different day and a different time for one time only.
All right. While we're on the airport advisory, need to find someplace for Gary to fit. So I'd like to ask you to go ahead and chair the airport advisory going forward.
To chair it?
Yes.
Chair or co-chair?
Chair.
Oh, chair?
Bill, Bill has three committees.
Oh, okay.
So if we can get him cut back to two, I think he would appreciate that.
Look at him, look at him.
I would ask that you go ahead and work with Gary?
Yes.
Until he feels comfortable that he can take off on his own?
Sounds good.
I don't know if you'll be able to land on your own, but at least if we can get you taken off on your own.
I sense a stall coming on. Short takeoff and landing.
Fly, here you fly.
You know, this, this air conditioning here has really caused an issue, of course, on this side of the table.
Yeah, it's horrible.
Hearing things.
It's had me all winter, too.
I'm sure I'd probably agree with whatever you're saying.
All right. So you, you didn't hear what, what we were talking about then?
Yeah, you asked me to chair the aviation-
Yes.
-committee.
Yep.
And Bill would assess me indefinitely.
I second Bill.
All right. Thank you. Travis is not with us tonight. Historic preservation, Deborah?
Our committee has been canceled this Wednesday due to lack of an agenda. So they will meet the next time in August 7th, 5:00 PM, Mueller Center.
Thank you. Evans Plunge, Linda?
The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee will meet on July 11th at noon at the Evans Plunge. Don't know when we will have a director.
We're working on getting a replacement director. Bob, Chris, Misty and I met last week and agreed that we need to expand the advertisements for the positions. There have been a number of people that have applied, but we still want to look to see if there's other folks who would be interested in the position.
Oh, okay.
Chris is agreed to help us out, maybe one, two days a week, but she's anxious to get into retirement and we're anxious to have her be able to do that. So we're working the problem and hope that we'll have a replacement soon.
Okay. All righty.
Parks Recreation, Larry, Linda?
Parks and Recreation will meet Wednesday, July 3rd, at 2:00 PM at the Mueller Civic Center.
Thank you.
I'd like to add something to that. I'm probably going to get in trouble for this, but right now in town, we're trying to put together a Native American group. And when that comes to fruition, depending on how long it lasts, hopefully for a long time, well, I think we've already talked about it, Mayor, I'd like to add that to the, the cultural development part of what we have here also.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. And council, any questions on that? You okay with that?
I think it needs more discussion so we know what you have in mind.
We'll bring the guests. Bunch of natives getting together going, hi.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning, Deborah?
I have no report from last month, because they didn't have an agenda and didn't have a meeting. The next one is scheduled for July 17th, 6:00 PM, City Hall.
Thank you. Public safety, Bill, JR?
Public safety will meet Thursday, July 11th, 2:00 PM, at the Mueller Center Conference Room. And again, this is a different date, one time only.
Thank you. Public works, Bill?
Okay. So much for no reports. Public works met Tuesday, June 25th, 1:00 PM, here at the Mueller Center. Members present were Hal Glanville, Deborah Johnson, Melissa Niles, myself, Mayor Nelson, City Administrator Bob Nelson Jr., Public Works Engineer Tracy Bastian, Streets and Maintenance Department Foreman Billy Morrow, and Mechanic Adam Burleson. Members of the public present were Tom Fisk, Kerry Pyle, Frank Burkholdt, Gary Tellcamp, Tori Olson, and Mary Kate Nelson. Communications from the public, a concern was expressed over affordable housing. The agenda was adopted as published under Old Business. We had an item regarding the soccer field water drainage upgrade. The member of the public that had brought this to the committee previously was present to ask that the project be planned for and budgeted. The committee discussed the merits of the project, and it will be included in the 2025 budget request by either Streets or Parks. Second old business item, the 905 South Sixth Street plat request. The property owner discussed the request to vacate a portion of Galveston Avenue that adjoins his property and is adjacent to the Mueller Center parking lot, which would allow him to install a barrier between his residence and the dump station. The Public Works Committee has no issue with this revision and advised the landowner to bring the request before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Old Business Item Three, regarding the youth garden water service installation cost. The committee does not recommend that the city provide the requested water service because of the unexpected high cost, which would be approximately $2,500. It was recommended that the group include that cost in their fundraising efforts. To enable the group to apply for grants and donations, it is necessary that they have a solid commitment from the city to allow the use of the land. Therefore, this committee recommends the council take appropriate action through a resolution or motion to designate the requested plot between the library and the book barn for a youth garden for a finite number of years, and request that that be on the next council agenda. Next old business item was in regard to the 2002 624H wheel loader replacement. The Streets Foreman and Mechanic were present and provided the information previously requested by the committee regarding the need and urgency to replace the loader. These benefits and any associated concerns were discussed. There's a very solid need for a second loader, and it is the opinion of the committee that to ask the Streets Department to do their assigned function without a second loader would cause unnecessary delays, cause additional overtime, and unnecessary wear and tear on existing equipment. These very, the various lease purchase options provided by the vendor were reviewed and assessed, and the committee is of the opinion that the best choice for the city, for the city that has the least adverse impact on the budget and the most benefit is for the five-year lease purchase option, and request that that be on the, the next council agenda. There was a request for an irrigation water rate only. The city administrator met with that property owner and verified that the service is irrigation only and no water is flowing into the wastewater system, and that charging that property for the irrigation rate only is- the irrigation rate only is appropriate per the ordinance. There was no update for the Valley View Drainage Assessment District. Under new business, we reviewed the active and inactive project list for what needed to be included in the 2025 budget discussions. And there was no information had been received on the estimated cost of each submitted street repair item for the 2024 street repair plan. Under departmental summaries regarding code enforcement, code enforcement activities are continuing. Additional inspection letters were sent out in mid-June. For the wastewater department, the aerators for the clarifiers have not been received to date. The enzyme treatment is continuing and water sampling results are improving and nuisance odors seem to be declining. Facility personnel will, personnel will continue to work the nuisance odor issues. There were no additional updates from the Public Works Engineer or the Streets Department. The active and inactive project information have been updated on the Public Works Report and that's been uploaded, uploaded on the city website. Meeting adjourned at 3:20 PM. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, July 23rd at 1:00 PM at the Mueller Center. This meeting has been changed due to the budget hearing, which will be Tuesday, June 30th. Questions?
I have a couple. The wheel loader replacement, is the lease purchase option that paperwork available? I saw some several months ago that had a 10% interest rate and I'm not sure if that recommendation, if that's still the rate?
Bob was asked to get that information together so that it can be, be in front of council. Yeah.
And then the irrigation water rate only, what property we have rest is that for?
I don't have that. Bob 2.0 has that.
So the wastewater department, I had questions of $5,400 in a statute of claims for some odor control and I looked at previous years what we spent and we spent over $10,000 yearly date and they said it would last for six weeks. Has anyone looked at the budget and the wastewater fund to determine if we can continue to utilize that type of treatment for the remainder of the year? If it's only lasts for about six weeks?
I don't have an answer to that Misty. I think hopefully, and this is me speaking, I wish Tracy was here. The enzymes have, and I think that's the increased cost, the enzymes have made a great improvement with the nuisance odors. Hopefully with the purchase of the aerators, which will go into the secondary clarifier, will reduce the need for those additional enzymes. So we may have to still add enzymes, but maybe not as much. But quite frankly, I've made a lot of that up. It, it, it's a, it's a, it's an assumption on my part, but they're working hard at, at addressing that odor issue. So hopefully Tracy and Jason would have more definitive information. Cause I, I, I saw those. Yeah. I saw those hits on the claims and, and also the balance on the wastewater.
Yeah, that was my question too Bill. I know we voted on it, but for the landscape rock, landscape rock, landscape rock, flowers, is this going to be a recurring thing? I mean, we have to look at the budget later.
Yeah. No.
Cause if they're going to be down there where it stinks, they might die. Just joking.
Any other questions for Bill? Thank you. Southern Hills Golf Course, don't have a scheduled report for you, but I do have an update on one particular item. Each year, the Local Golf Course Superintendent's Association Chapter holds a spring and a fall conference. The spring conferences are always held in Sioux Falls. The fall conferences however rotate throughout the state. This September, the fall conference is scheduled to be in the Black Hills and the board representative, representatives have asked Jason if the Southern Hills Golf Course could host one of the golf outings on May, on Monday, September 23rd. The request is that the hosting course donates, oops, what was the language I was supposed to use? For the golf, golf carts, the golf fees and the carts to the local chapter during the outing. The course does, the course does get all the food and beverage sales. Attendance is expected to be between 50 and 60 people. As far as the pricing incentives, each year, when the council approves the yearly fee schedule, you also approve pricing promotions and incentives. And the language that you approve each year is, be it further resolved that management for the Southern Hills Golf Course, Evans Plunge Mineral Springs, Mueller Civic Center and Recreation reserves the right to create pricing promotions and incentives and shall notify applicable advisory committees who will report any new pricing promotions or incentives to the full council during a committee report at council meetings. So the Golf Course Committee, Advisory Committee supports hosting the 2024 Local Golf Course Superintendent's Association Conference at Southern Hills Golf Course. Unless there's any pushback from you folks, we've asked Jason to let the folks know that we would be happy to host that fall conference forum. Hearing none. I'll remind Jason that, that the folks know that they can have their conference in Hot Springs this year. So that's all I have from the Golf Course Advisory unless you have any other questions for me. All right, our city administrator is necessarily out of town, addressing some personal issues. So we won't have a report from him tonight. That takes us to Misty's Finance Officer Report.
I do provide the monthly reports in your calendar. Welcome to our new council members and our returning council members. For those of you that haven't seen it before, I prepare and present financial monthly, which includes a yearly profit loss summary, monthly summary report, which shows you how we fund the assuming to compare to the budget. The cash balance report, showing the current balances and our well-starred checking account, bank and investment reports, which include all of the cash assets of the city. I encourage you to review the reports and ask questions you may have related to them. The profit loss summary report by fund, which has been quite sewn in red. At the end of June, we're 973,108,28 cents is a loss, so we have a lot of big projects and we heard a lot of things that were going on earlier. So although that's a little alarming, we know how we got here and they do believe that we have a good, quite good plan and we know the better we can stick to that, the better we'll be up in the long run for the year. So I hope to see that improve. The fund summary report will happen through the year, so I have to review those numbers. That's the percentage I keep in mind, although it would also remind you that many of our expenses happened at the beginning of the year and a lot of our enterprise funding were big with the expenses toward the end of the year. Now cash balance report, you can see the regular amounts in some of our main enterprise funds, but both the Golf Course and Evans Fund are doing fine financially. We are under half a million in our water fund and just over half a million in our wastewater fund as we're nearing the end of these big projects and those. Thank you for passing the dates for the municipal budget planning meetings. They happen here, they start at 5:00, you can expect them to last several hours, but we try not to go past 9:00 PM on any night and then schedule additional meetings if necessary. The first meeting in September is the statutory deadline for presenting the budget ordinance and as reminded, although they're open to the public, we don't invite any, the goal department heads or organizations to come and make requests to the city during these meetings. All goes well. My plan is to provide you with the preliminary budget reports and worksheets by the 24th of July, providing you an opportunity to review them prior to the scheduled meetings. They have been distributed to the department heads and the city administrators meeting with department heads to fill out the remaining sections of those on the July 17th. That's CML elected officials workshop is scheduled for Wednesday, July 24th of the year. I email the invitation out to everybody except Gary. Gary, if that's something you're interested in attending, let me know and we take care of the registration for you. As with other CML conferences and workshops, they're always worth it if you can find the time to go. July 9th is the RSCP deadline, so please let me know by that date. I'd like to remind existing and new council members that a very important responsibility of yours is the review and approval of claims. The ultimate responsibility is yours. The council is both entitled and obligated to ask any and all questions necessary to be comfortable with the approval of the claims. I also want to remind you that all of our purchasing happens in full view of the public. Early polls show large support for Initiated Measure 28. That's the Cocaine Food and Grocery Taxes Initiative, which will be on the ballot according to the number. I provided some information in my memo about the Initiated Measure and some of the information that we've been talking about at budget workshops and our finance officer Bruce. I talked about what the proponents are saying and what some of the, those concerns with it have to say. Please do your own research and data, but I want to let you know that I've estimated the potential impacts on the city of Hot Springs sales tax revenue to be about $700,000 in lost revenue if it passes and the cities have to follow the state. I know initially you were told that the cities would be able to keep their sales tax on grocery taxes, but Marty Jackley, the Attorney General, has provided a valid explanation which indicates that that could put us in violation of our streamlined sales tax agreement and also a settlement regarding the tobacco, tobacco master settlement. So there's also a statute that in part states that cities and towns can charge a sales tax if the tax conforms in all respects to the state tax. So it'd also be in violation of that statute if cities continue to charge it. At this time, because this is a constitut, it's an initiated measure and bad constitutional amendment, it's reasonable to assume that state legislators will address it during the 2025 legislative session if it passes in November. So for this reason, with your concurrence, I choose to not adjust the 2025 budget estimates at this time, but I want you all to be aware that if it does, that that impact will be $700,000 or more lost revenue to the city. But I wanted to mention that the governor granted administrative leave day on Friday, July 5th and observance of the Independence Day holiday and our state follows the state. So our city offices will be closed on the 4th and 5th and then just to let you be aware, know that I'm out the 3rd through the night. Once again, welcome to our new and returning council members and thank you for what you do to keep our city running. As always, my door is open and I appreciate your questions and interest and thank you.
Any questions for Misty?
Misty, do we, if, if I am 28 passes and the legislature doesn't do anything to protect the cities, do we have any recourse or anything to do to recover the lost revenue?
I have no idea how we will recover that type of lost revenue. What I did come up with a figure is I went to the standard industry classification codes and looked at 2023 and total for the city of Hot Springs and tried out any eating establishments because it doesn't tell you what each business is. So I can go over what I reviewed with you, just might come up with that ballpark figure, but human consumables is what is on the measure. It, it is defined to exclude alcohol and tobacco, but other consumable items such as toilet paper, they're not food. There's question whether that's included or not and I can't break out from our sales tax as I see reports what might be food, what might be toilet paper, but that's my estimate and I don't have an idea and there hasn't been anything proposed that helps support cities if that happens.
I don't think people understand how catastrophic it would be because cities like Hot Springs, where we get about 50% of our revenue from sales tax and the 700,000 that you've estimated is about 40% of that sales tax estimate.
For the general fund.
For the general fund. So, and then that's not only whacking at the general fund, but then a third of that sales tax is what goes into the 212 fund and that's, you know, there's the complaint that the city's not repairing roads. Well, that's how we repair roads is through the two, the, the third of the sales, city sales tax. So we could be looking at devastating impacts on how we provide the city services that we got, that we discussed earlier in the meeting.
Did it all start snowballing?
It's not a light thing.
Anyone else? All right, briefly for you tonight, the last council meeting, we had talked about the July 4th parade route. At that time, the parade route, the entrance, we're going to line up on 23rd Street heading south. They then would proceed down University Avenue to Jensen, or to Chicago 385, turn right at the intersection. Since then, I had a conversation with the state and complete construction and the route will return to a more traditional route and that they'll line up on 23rd Street heading to the north. They'll come down Menacotta Avenue and turn on to Main Street on the Highway 385 and then continue the normal route through town to get to the south end of town. Parking will be available on Menacotta and in Centennial Park. The Star has done a good article of talking about the parade route, but there should not be any parking in the construction area itself, nor should there be any pedestrians on the riverside of Main Street watching the parade. It's still a construction zone, but the businesses on the north end of town will certainly benefit. The other thing that was pointed out to me is that there are folks at the Evans that have not, would not have been able to see a parade for three years because getting out for them is much, much more difficult. So at least this year, they'll be able to see a parade, the 4th of July parade. Again, the parade will come down Menacotta, heading to the west or heading to the east, turn south on to Main Street and then follow the traditional route from there. If you're traveling, be safe. Be safe with fireworks and we'll see everybody at the next council meeting. So that's all I have for you unless you have any questions for me.
I'd like to concur what you say there mayor, because that is a construction area over there where they're, they're working at. Please don't sit on the wall, don't go over there, don't stand over there because that wall's not got any support on it. I don't want to, I hope we don't have anybody fall over into the river. You know, I mean, that's, to me, that's reality. So, thank you.
That brings us to a motion.